Good evening, everyone. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Monday, April 3, 2023, at 6:51 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you so much for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Zapata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Secretary Boswell, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge to the Texas Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Juro lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que representan. Una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Te honro bandera de Texas. Te juro lealtad Texas, un estado bajo Dios, uno e indivisible.
Thank you, Secretary Boswell. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board. This time allow speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing. We have time for up to 60 speakers. As a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings and of the board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the board to take part in active listening. While we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio-record their remarks. We will now play the recorded messages for public comment, so please listen carefully.
Yes, this is Joanne Smith. I am calling about the conservators for the special education. It's a fabulous idea. In fact, it's one that must occur. The problem definitely is the fact of not getting evaluations done, but the bigger problem is the leadership of the department. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees and interim Superintendent Segura. My name is Megan Boskas and I'm a special PE teacher and Education Austin OT member. I am calling in regards to Agenda Item 4.1. First, I would like to publicly give my support to the board and interim superintendent. As an E.A. member, we spent countless hours organizing to elect this special group of people. Since December, these newly and formerly democratically elected trustees have worked diligently and efficiently to create a brighter future for our district. They have been transparent in their priority to improve SED and have come up with a system and plan to correct these issues. We have no doubt that with time and full local control, you'll see progress from their strategic and intentional work. I've also been following the news about HISD and it seems that TEAs get many involvement steps that were present in the HISD case. I distrust that TEA, who is currently under federal investigation for their mishandling of SED issues, has any credibility to make judgments for our students. If our board members and interim choose to appeal this case, Education Austin gives our full support. Like our Board of Trustees said in their statement in AISD, we are united and we share a common goal to address these SED challenges and get it right for our students. Thank you so much for your commitment and dedication to our district. Y'all are appreciated.
Hi, I'm Megan Holden. I'm a teacher in AISD. Hi, trustees. I'm calling in support of our democratically elected school board members, our locally controlled school district, and our interim superintendent. As a teacher here, I have witnessed firsthand the consequences of underfunding and understaffing our public schools, as well as the disproportionate effects on our special populations. Remediating this dire situation does not call for a conservatorship, but rather it requires support, resources, and funding from our state. Austin ISD spent the better part of $1 billion on recapture last year. Oversight without providing proper resources is disingenuous at best. As a member of Education Austin, I will fully support your appeal. Thank you.
My name is Free Rolson, proud member of Education Austin. If TEA has something to contribute or should help the district, do just that, help. Unfortunately, we have little faith that TEA can bear to help when we need the help they provide to Houston ISD. We will continue to stand in solidarity with AISD since our workers continue to have voice and agency in decision-making. We believe TEA, who is currently under federal investigation for the mishandling of SED issues, has no credibility to make judgments for our students. We are the experts, not the bureaucrats. These issues were created largely by the state's illegal cap on evaluation and lack of funding. We do have faith in the newly-elected AIS board of trustees and the interim superintendent because they are dealing with these problems honestly and transparently with all hands on deck. This gives us hope. Texas is among the lowest per pupil in funding and yet the legislature continues to deny significant increases that will provide adequate staffing and pay workers their worth. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda.
Hello, trustees. My name is Emily Sharon and I am a teaching assistant in Special Education and AISD. I am also a proud member of Education Austin and serve on the Executive Board. As teachers and staff of Austin ISD, we have witnessed firsthand the consequences of underfunding and understaffing in our public schools, as well as the disproportionate effects on our special populations. Remediating this dire situation does not call for a conservatorship, but rather it requires support, resources, and funding from our state. Austin ISD spent the better part of $1 billion on recapture last year. Oversight without providing proper resources is disingenuous at best. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda.
This is Amanda Walsh. I am a teacher at Austin ISD. And as teachers and staff of Austin ISD, we've witnessed firsthand the consequences of underfunding and understaffing in our public schools, as well as the disproportionate effects on our special population. Remediating this dire situation does not call for a conservatorship, but rather it requires support, resources, and funding from our state. Austin ISD spent the better part of $1 billion on recapture last year. Oversight without providing proper resources is disingenuous at best.
Good morning. My name is Matt Flickinger and I am a high school teacher at Bowie High School. As a teacher and staff member of Austin ISD, I have witnessed firsthand the consequences of underfunding and understaffing in our public schools, as well as the disproportionate effects this has had on our special populations. Remediating this dire situation does not call for a conservatorship, but rather it requires support, resources, and funding from our state, something that has been denied to us far too often. Austin ISD spent the better part of $1 billion on recapture last year. Oversight without proper resources is disingenuous at best, especially from the governing body responsible for this deficit in the first place. Thank you.
My name is Chrissy Haney and I'm a current AISD teacher and parent, former special education teacher and member of Education Austin. I've witnessed firsthand the consequences of the lack of funding and the lack of resources in our public schools and the disproportionate effects on our special pops. This situation doesn't call for a takeover or a conservatorship. It calls for adequate resources and funding. So I hope that the board decides to appeal the decision by TEA to appoint a conservator and I hope that we can work together to actually fix the problem. Thank you.
Hello, trustees. My name is Chelsea McCaffrey and I am a teacher in AISD. I'm a proud member of Education Austin. I'm calling in support of our democratically elected school board members and our locally-controlled school district, as well as our interim superintendent. The announcement of a conservatorship of Austin School's Special Education Department is premature as the state has skipped many involvement steps and has intentionally escalated the intervention to suit their own agenda. We greatly value our local collaboration between the board administration and our entire AISD community. We've already begun to work together to correct these problems. As a member of Education Austin, I will fully support an appeal from our board when they seek it out. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda. Thank you.
Hello, trustees. My name is Elizabeth Russell and I am a teacher with Austin ISD. I am a proud member of Education Austin. I am calling in support of our democratically elected school board members and our locally-controlled school district, as well as our interim superintendent. The announcement of a conservatorship of Austin School's Special Education Department is premature as the state has skipped many involvement steps and has intentionally escalated the intervention to suit their own agenda. We greatly value our local collaboration between the board, administration, and our entire Austin ISD community. We have already begun to work together to connect these problems, correct these problems. As a member of Education Austin, I will fully support an appeal from our board when they seek it out. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Preston and I'm a proud member of Education Austin. TEA thinks sending conservators will remediate this dire situation, but they should send support, resources, and adequate funding instead. TEA has no credibility to make judgments for our students. It is currently under federal investigation for mishandling of SED issues and the issues in our district were created largely by the state's illegal caps on evaluations and lack of funding. As the teachers and staff of AISD, we have witnessed firsthand the consequences of underfunding and understaffing in our public schools, as well as the disproportionate effects on our special populations. Austin ISD spent the better part of $1 billion on recapture last year. Texas is among the lowest in per pupil funding and yet the legislature continues to deny significant increases that will provide adequate staffing and pay workers their worth. We stand in solidarity with AISD to ensure workers continue to have voice and agency in decision-making. We trust the newly-elected board of trustees and the interim superintendent because they are dealing with these issues honestly and transparently. Oversight without providing proper resources is disingenuous at best. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda.
My name is Patricia Lyons. I applied for an occupational therapy position twice, once last year at this time and then once this past December. This past December, I got contacted by someone trying to get me in really fast for an interview, which was great and she was excited. I was excited. When I sent her my resume, second time, she canceled the interview within 12 hours and wouldn't tell me why. I personally believe it is because of my age. I think there was some age discrimination going on there. In the second interview, she missed that. With the resume, she was able to put together my age and I'm over 40. I filed a discrimination complaint against AISD this past February. Still working on it. Yeah, I have over five years' working experience in schools. As a school OT, I have the qualifications. She just canceled it and refused to tell me why. And recruiting agencies have been calling me for that position since then. I contacted them again and said, can you tell these people if you're not going to interview me to stop calling me? They won't stop calling me. There's recruiters out there trying to fill this position. I can't understand why my interview was canceled.
Hi, this is Maureen Vos and I'm a parent of students in Brentwood and Keeling. And I wanted to call in regarding the special meeting today. I'd like for Austin ISD Board to please partner with the Coalition for Special Education Equity and Austin ISD members. They've been working hard on behalf of SED students in the district. I'd also like to ask that an ombudsman be appointed through this process with the TEA conservatorship because I understand that CSEE has concerns about both AISD and TEA in the process. Thank you very much for your time and work. Thanks. Bye.
My name is Marina Roberts and I'm a former Education Austin member and former public school teacher in AISD. I left the district because I did not see teachers being given enough power over the decisions that affect their lives on the job, which far exceed eight hours a day. I'm calling because I am very skeptical that the TEA is going to genuinely help whenever they send conservators to help the district, especially given that they're currently under federal investigation for their mishandling of SED issues. I believe that these issues were created largely by the state's illegal caps on evaluations and lack of funding and I do have faith in the newly democratically-elected AIS board of trustees and the interim superintendent because those are the people who are dealing with these problems on the ground. I would like to see an increase in per pupil funding. I would like to see the legislature stop denying significant increases that would provide adequate staffing. I think there are a lot of problems and I think that y'all should turn your attention elsewhere. This is not the solution to the problem we're trying to solve. Thank you.
Si, buen dia, este Ray Lopez Mata aqui. Queria nomas hacer un comentario que se me parezca apropiado lo que quiera hacer la agencia de educación de Texas, puesto de lo que he visto en más de cerca de 20 años aquí en el distrito de Austin. Ya sea de lo mínimo que no se les ayuda a los padres, no se les informa a los padres, se les toma ventaja porque no están informados o son de habla hispana, no se les explica todo lo que es necesario en situaciones profundamente incorrectas. Este un niño que tenía, fue indicado para life work, life skills. Seis semanas se pasó en una escuela, en una clase que no era apropiada. No se le dijo nada al padre y no sé ni qué se le dijo al padre, sino que simplemente ahí estuvo allí y no se le dio explicación a mí de por qué y cómo sucedió eso. Hay niños que han estado esperando que se les dé la ayuda apropiada por más de años, dos años, y niños que han llegado hasta el segundo grado con conocimientos solo desde el kindergarten. Entonces esos niños, ¿cómo es que se les está ayudando? Se les está grabando y todo debajo de la mesa, ¿verdad? Todo lo esconden. ¿Por qué? Porque no tienen problemas. Y digo, no quieren los...
This is an interpretation into English of Ray Lopez Mata's message. Yes, good morning. Ray Lopez Mata here. I just wanted to comment that I think what the Texas Education Agency wants to do is appropriate because from what I have seen in more than close to 20 years here in the Austin School District, even when it comes to the minimum, parents are not helped. Parents are not informed. Parents are taken advantage of because they are not informed or they speak Spanish. They don't get an explanation of everything that's necessary in situations that are profoundly wrong. A child who was identified for life work, life skills, spent six weeks in a school, in a class that was not appropriate. They did not tell anything to the parent. I don't even know what was said to the parent, but he was simply there and I did not get any explanation about why or how that happened. There are children who have been waiting to receive the appropriate help for more than years, two years, and children who have made it to second grade with kinder-level knowledge. So how are those kids being helped? They are being harmed and everything is under the table, right? They hide everything. Why? Because they don't want problems. And I mean, they don't want...
This is Sharon Vane. I'm an AISD parent of a Bowie junior and a 2022 graduate. We are at a crossroads in which multiple things are true. The district has long failed too many of its families in providing special education services and it's hard not to question the motives of TEA in announcing this move. I believe the current board has already displayed more motivation to address the decades' worth of failures, but it will take more than this to truly support the students who now need services in the district, from those overdue for evaluation to those being isolated instead of being included. I hope that the board's current commitment to transparency will continue as it works with the TEA conservators so we can see how progress is being made in multiple areas, more than just the backlog of evaluations. I hope there is support and accountability for all in the district who work with these students and families and I hope that we hold strong boundaries against any further attempts to turn our students and district into political pawns. Thank you.
Good morning. This is Allison Dwyer and I'm a parent in AISD and have been for over 20 years. I have four kids that have graduated and are currently in the AISD system. I just want to praise the board for your hard work. I am calling in regarding the recent TEA announcement to come in alongside you and support you and your work towards the special education needs in our district. And while I'm happy that you're getting support, I also am skeptical of their motives and I just want to tell you we are with you and support you and please let us know how we can further help you in the future.
Hello, my name is Macy Martin and I'm a teacher at Bowie High School. I have witnessed firsthand the consequences of underfunding and understaffing that our public schools have seen, as well as the disproportionate effects on our special populations. I believe TEA, who is currently under federal investigation for the mishandling of SED issues, has no credibility to make judgments for our students. These issues were created largely by the state's illegal caps on evaluations and lack of funding. Despite AISD spending a better part of $1 billion on recapture last year, Texas is among the lowest in per pupil funding and yet the legislation continues to deny significant increases that will provide adequate staffing and pay workers their worth. Oversight from the state without providing proper resources is disingenuous at best. The announcement of a conveyorship of Austin School's Special Education Department is premature and the state has skipped many involvement steps and has intentionally escalated the intervention to suit their own agenda. My support is with the newly-elected AIS board of trustees and the interim superintendent because they are dealing with these problems honestly and transparently. Thank you.
My name is Mara Masters. I am an AISD teacher and Education Austin board member. I would like to voice my support of the systems being built by our current elected board of trustees and our interim superintendent that a state that underfunds public education generally and special education specifically and whose education agency is under federal investigation for inadequate services to special education students feels that it is the entity best suited to help AISD fix its special education issues is antithetical and disingenuous. While we must follow the letter of the law, I urge the board to appeal the conservatorship and to resist outside solutions that it finds harmful to our students, staff, and community. Thank you.
Hi, trustees. My name is Lindsay and I'm a staff member in the district. I'm also a proud member of Education Austin and I'm calling in support of our democratically-elected school board members and our locally-controlled school district, as well as our interim superintendent. The announcement of a conservatorship of Austin School's Special Education Department is premature as the state has skipped many involvement steps and has intentionally escalated the intervention to suit their own agenda. We greatly value our local collaboration between the board, administration, and our entire AISD community and have already begun to work together to correct these problems. As a member of Education Austin, I fully support an appeal from our board whenever they do seek it out. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda. Thank you. Bye.
Good evening, AISD trustees and superintendents Segura. My name is Gracie Hopkins and I'm a fourth-grade dual-language teacher at Beddoes Elementary and I'm a proud Education Austin member. As school staff, we have witnessed firsthand how systems have continued to fail students with disabilities in our district and across the state. The urgency to prioritize and provide an equitable, accessible, and inclusion-driven, free and appropriate public education to all students is shared by staff, families, and community. We elected a school board that we know will do better than the prior board and administration for students with disabilities. TEA deciding on a conservatorship is a political move, not a sincere one. It fits the voucher-pushing privatization agenda. They're using students with disabilities as a pawn in a bigger political ploy to privatize education. We stand by our democratically-elected trustees and in solidarity with our locally-controlled school district and demand true change for our kids with disabilities. Our current board is well-poised to tackle this challenge and we will stand by them in solidarity while still holding this district accountable, just like our students deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jill Bracamonte. I have three differently-able children in the district and I'm a special education coordinator outside of AISD. I'm calling tonight to express thank you to the board for being proactive on getting help with the special education crisis in AISD. However, I also want to express concerns regarding the TEA conservatorship and support. I'm, first of all, deeply concerned about TEA's help since they are discriminatory towards children with hidden disabilities, which you can see in the restrictions they have placed on allowable star accommodations, where students may only access certain accommodations if they demonstrate a physical disability and they do not recognize specific learning disabilities and other hidden disabilities. I'm also concerned that our crisis in special education is related to a bigger crisis in general education and the way it is inconsistent across campuses. So thank you, once again, thank you for your continued work to support all students in AISD, but please remember to be vigilant and continuing to monitor the progress in special education. Thank you. Goodbye.
My name is Beth Bacon and my son attends Keiker Elementary, where he receives special education services. And I just want to say how pleased I am with the Keiker Elementary's special education team and the services they have provided for my son and the teamwork they've provided. And I am concerned about the conservatorship from the TEA taking over the Special Education Department and I would just like to know if you can get an outline of how they plan to address the Special Education Department better than AISD has. Again, my name is Beth Bacon. Thanks so much. Bye.
My name is... I'm a parent and I've been an active community advocate working towards reforms for students with disabilities for years. I understand the duty to protect the district from a conservatorship, given that our state laws give broad powers and potential takeover, but the duty first and foremost should be to students and families. The district's experience right now, struggling with being thrust into a situation where they don't get to choose who helps them, they don't get to choose who they collaborate with, and they're not assured of collaboration or help is exactly how many of the families feel right now when they go to their R tables. Those charged with helping them don't always do help them and real collaboration doesn't work and the decisions are binding and long-reaching to the student. The TEA has had its own very troubling past with ensuring the rights of students with disabilities across Texas. No one has a crystal ball to look at whether a conservatorship will be positive or not. It's doubtful AISD can pivot to compliance in two years. The appeal could be denied, so perhaps it's best to make very robust plans for a change that can happen in two years. I'm not sure AISD or TEA can make the changes needed, but things have snowballed so much. The only sure thing known is you have a two-year limit to get something done. Thank you.
My name is Ashley Frick. I'm the parent of a third-grade student currently enrolled in AISD. We submitted a formal request for evaluation for special services on November 7, 2022. The process has been very disheartening. The current system, or lack of system, does not work. There's no transparency or tracking in this process. We're 147 days and counting into this progress with no answer to date. The incidents cited in the TA report mirror our experience. It's safe to assume that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of kids awaiting an evaluation in our school district. It's clear that AISD needs outside support, guidelines, and a system that allows for teachers, admins, professionals, parents, and students clarity on this process. It's the board's responsibility to represent our community expectations and we expect that if support is needed to be successful, the board will accept it. Our students reserve the right to receive special services if needed. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Ken Zerip, President of Education Austin. Special education students should be a top priority for AISD, TEA, and our state legislature. For too long, the lack of state funding has hurt our public schools and more directly, students. And of those, special ed students are hurt the most. The district has a responsibility to prioritize special ed students and Education Austin believes the current board, administration, and interim superintendent Segura are doing that. However, they can't do it alone. They need time and money. Time from TEA to a lot of the systems and supports that have been implemented over the last two months to have an impact. And the legislature needs to provide the money. Understaffed schools, underpaid employees, and overworked employees are not going to close the gap by simply being told to do better. We need more people, more training, and more time and all of that costs money. If the state truly cares about special education students and public education, they will find the money. Otherwise, it's just politics as usual and kids suffer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Betts. I have a daughter that was in special ed at AISD and hopefully will be able to return to AISD as well as being an educational advocate. What I want to say is that... What I want to say is that, um, no, I am not in favor of AISD getting their own, um, monitor. Who's going to hire this monitor? AISD, um, AISD is the ones who, who has messed this up to begin with. So, no, I'm not in favor of that. You don't, you want to know who you're going to work with and they, you want them to work with you? So do the parents, but we don't get that option. And, um, the new super, the interim superintendent, um, has been working on aggressively since January, but he's been the superintendent, uh, the interim superintendent since way before then. So, it, it doesn't give me any hope or trust or faith that AISD is going to do anything any differently for my daughter.
Hi, my name is Meg Hardick and I am a former life skills one-to-one aide, as well as a proud member of Education Austin. If TEA is sending conservators to help the district, they should do just that, help. Unfortunately, we have little faith in TEA's sincerity to help when we see the help that they provided in Houston ISD. We will stand in solidarity with AISD to ensure workers continue to have a voice and agency in decision-making. We believe that TEA, who is currently under federal investigation for their mishandling of special, SED issues, has no credibility to make judgments for our students. We are the experts, not the bureaucrats. These issues were created largely by the state's illegal caps on evaluation and lack of funding. We do have faith in the newly elected AISD Board of Trustees and the interim superintendent because they have already begun dealing with these problems honestly and transparently, transparently. This gives us hope. Texas is among the lowest in per pupil funding, and yet the legislature continues to deny significant increases that will provide adequate staffing and pay for workers who know their worth. We know our worth in AISD and we'll plan to show TEA that we are not to be collateral damage in their political agenda.
This is Deborah Tewoh, parent of two students in Austin ISD. I'm asking today that AISD use this opportunity to absolutely change the game for students with disabilities in the district, to shift its focus with all deliberate speed, to change its messaging immediately to principals, administrators, teachers, and parents, that the dis, it's a new day in AISD, that AISD is going to take all steps necessary to ensure that students with and without disabilities receive a meaningful education that is based on universal design, that curriculum is built with bilingual and learners and learners with disabilities from the front end. AISD needs to clearly message that there is a new day and that all schools must look for opportunities in all classrooms to modify and accommodate all learners. The board has previously indicated it desires to be more inclusive and in line with federal law, and it needs to make that clear. It needs to start today and do that across the board. AISD should fulfill its own stated vision of being the home for inclusive education in Austin and principal.
My name is Kyle Williams. Uh, I'm an AISD teacher and I'm a proud member of Education Austin. If TEA is sending conservators to help the district, they should do just that, help. Unfortunately, we have little faith in TEA's sincerity to help when we see the help they provided in Houston ISD. We will stand in solidarity with AISD to ensure workers continue to have voice and agency in decision-making. We believe TEA, who is currently under federal investigation for their mishandling of SED issues, has no credibility to make judgments for our students. We're the experts, not the bureaucrats. These issues were created largely by the state's illegal caps on evaluations and lack of funding. We do have faith in the newly elected AISD Board of Trustees and the interim superintendent because they're dealing with these problems honestly and transparently as possible. This gives us hope. Texas is among the lowest in per pupil funding, and yet the legislature continues to deny significant increases that will provide adequate staffing and pay workers their worth. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda. Part of the reason that this issue is currently happening is not because people are not trying to process this backlog, but we just don't have the staffing to do it. So, um, thank you.
Hi, my name is Frank Natcher and I am a expectant father and proud supporter of Education Austin. If TEA is going to be sending conservators to this district, they should do that. They should help. They shouldn't just take over the district. Fortunately, I have very little faith in TEA's sincerity to help when we see the help that they've provided. My home district, HISD, we will stand in solidarity with AISD to ensure workers continue to have a voice and agency in decision, decision-making processes. I believe that TEA, who is currently under federal investigation for mishandling SED issues, has no credibility to make judgments for our students. We are the experts, not the bureaucrats. Most of you, many of y'all were teachers. Many of y'all were elected because you represent teachers. These issues were created largely by the state's illegal caps and evaluations and lack of funding. We do have faith in the newly elected AISD Board of Trustees and the interim superintendent because they are dealing with these problems honestly and transparently. This is giving me hope. Texas is among the lowest in per pupil funding, and yet the legislature continues to deny funding, continues to deny payment for teachers.
Good evening, I'm Jake Morgan and I'm a teacher and a proud member of Education Austin. I'm calling today in support of our democratically elected school board members, our locally controlled district, and Dr. Matias. I'll stand behind this board as they continue their efforts to correct the problems in this district regarding special education. As someone who's directly working with these students on a daily basis, I can recognize these issues and I support you in your willingness and ability to deal with these issues transparently and honestly. What I will not support is a political ploy by TEA to opportunist, opportunistically assert control over our district. If you want to help us, TEA, stop funneling money out of a district that is clearly in need. Thank you.
My name is Kynan Murtaugh and I am a proud member of Education Austin. If TEA is sending conservators to help the district, they should do just that, help. Unfortunately, we have little faith in TEA's sincerity to help when we see the help they provided in Houston ISD. We will stand in solidarity with AISD to ensure workers continue to have voice and agency in decision-making. We believe TEA, who is currently under federal investigation for the mishandling of SED issues, has no credibility to make judgments for our students. We are the experts, not the bureaucrats. These issues were created largely by the state's illegal caps on evaluations and lack of funding. We do have faith in the newly elected AISD Board of Trustees and the interim superintendent because they are dealing with these problems honestly and transparently. This gives us hope. Texas is among the lowest in per pupil funding, and yet the legislature continues to deny significant increases that will provide adequate staffing and pay workers their worth. We know our worth in AISD and we plan to show TEA that we will not be collateral damage in their political agenda. Thanks for listening. I'm hanging up now.
Hi, AISD trustees, thank you for your service to our students in our district. My name is Heather Rell and I'm AISD parent for two students, one at Summit Elementary and one at Lively Middle School. I love both our schools and I love having my students in AISD. I am calling today to talk about the TEA conservatorship for AISD's special education. So here's the deal with me. I have a kid with a learning disability and with health issues. Well, we had an amazing teacher put up the red flag to get my kid evaluated. It took the district almost an entire year to get this done. I sat there waiting as the district cut the entire Special Education Department and called it reorganizing. For our 504 year at this year, the district actively fought against our specialist requests and needs for my students. They went with the bare minimum they felt they needed to do. It's been ridiculous and the situation is not fair and equitable for my student. I'm a huge supporter of AISD, however, I am angry. My students' needs aren't being met. I'm all about bringing in some extra hands to get us where we need to be. I hope the district will go beyond the bare minimum and fight for all students and give them the education they deserve. Thank you again for your time and attention.
My name is Tara Trower and I have two children in the Austin School District, one of whom is in SED. I have been engaged in an incredibly frustrating four-year battle to get my youngest child properly evaluated. She was evaluated in 2018 and despite a strong family history of autism and notation in the report that she has autistic tendencies and a private diagnosis of social communication disorder, her initial AISD evaluation indicated that her qualification as SED was emotionally disturbed. In spring 2020, I requested a reevaluation specifically for autism. Despite being promised a timely evaluation, it was not completed until fall 2022. And then with the autism evaluator spending only 20 minutes with my child despite indications that she is able to mask her autistic behaviors for short periods of time. At every point, there's been delays at the district level. Her education should not depend on whether the teacher has an intuitive understanding of what autism looks like in girls. Without the appropriate designation, her education continues to suffer. Given the state of things, I suppose I should be happy that at least she qualified for services, but the district is legally required to provide more than that. And if it takes state intervention for that to happen, then so be it. Thank you very much.
Hi, I am Leah Kelly. I'm reading the following statement, statement written by my daughter on her behalf. My name is Harper Kelly. I'm an autistic 10th grade student with mental health issues enrolled to Austin High School. I can't come to the board meeting tonight and I blame Austin ISD for that. I'm currently receiving homebound services because my teachers didn't follow my IEP. The paraprofessional working with me wasn't trained and you deny me services for over a year that would have made it possible for me to be in school. I came to ARD after ARD asking for help. My administrators, case managers, critical case manager, and warriors said no over and over. This seriously impacted my mental health. I spend my days at home worried and scared for what is going to happen when I do end up coming back. The district doesn't see me as a person. They don't listen, they don't try to understand. Honestly, I am convinced you are all sick of me. The negligence this district has shown has put me in a state of dysfunction. I can no longer perform basic daily activities for myself. Driving kids to this state of mind is not serving them and I don't deserve the punishment for things beyond my control. We don't even have time to talk about the retaliation. I guess I'll have to write you all about that. Why did you let it get this far? Thank you for your time.
Soy Brenda Flores. Mis tres hijos tienen educación especial. El departamento de educación especial y los maestros no han respetado ni han puesto en práctica las acomodaciones, metas, y modificaciones que aparecen en el IEP. El IEP está escrito pero no han respetado nada. Gracias.
This is an English interpretation for Brenda Flores's message. My three children have special education. The Special Education Department and the teachers have not respected, nor have they put into practice, the accommodations, goals, and modifications in the IEP. The IEP is written, but they have not respected anything. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Segura, this is Heather Merritt. I am calling with concerns about the TEA conservatorship over special education. Um, this is the same agency that put a cap on special education back in 2004, the same year that I started in this district. I know students who dropped out before they could have their evaluations completed. I know students who didn't get services because their evaluations were not completed. We know that we have work to do. We know that we need to do better with inclusive practices. However, having the same agency come in to tell us what to do and they also capped special education and, uh, caused students to not receive services for over a decade, um, I have issues with that. So I want to know exactly what they are doing, exactly what their role is when they come in, and exactly what they mean on page 30 of the report when they say that they need to have, uh, duties expansive enough to direct all areas affecting or affected by special education, because we know that our students with disabilities should be served everywhere. So what does TEA mean by this? Please keep our kids who didn't get those services and the staff who have been working on these evaluations, day in and day out, front and center of any steps moving forward.
No. Good evening, my name is Cynthia Valdez and I am a parent who has graduated two children from the Austin Independent School District Public Education System, uh, one from, uh, Austin High School and the other, my younger daughter, from Rosedale. She was a special education student and it is to the Special Education Department that I want to target and concentrate my comments about. They have a long history of not serving all our students and, uh, using systemically racist, um, systems and processes and people, uh, to determine who will and who will not access modifications, a good IEP resources, so that they don't, uh, become disenchanted with the school system and drop out of school. However, I am, I am against any conservator being appointed by TEA, which plays partisan politics with our students' lives, to be, uh, considered. If we can fight that however we can, let's do that, but let us move forward with attempting to solve our old problems.
Hello, my name is Travis Ward. I'm a community organizer with Austin DSA in District 9. Um, while I'm not a member of Education Austin, I have been parts of coalitions where we've worked with them often on issues related to public schools. Um, I'm calling to support our newly democratically elected school board members and our locally controlled school district, um, as well as our interim superintendent over a potential conservatorship of AISD schools. Um, this is premature. It skipped many steps and intentionally escalated the intervention to shoot their, or to suit TEA's own agenda. Um, we believe that the new school board will, uh, has already taken steps to correct the issues that the threat for conservatorship, um, has been made, uh, to fix. Um, we've already, I believe, Education Austin is already working together to correct these problems. Um, so for this, I would fully support an appeal from our board when they seek it out. Um, I believe in local control for AISD. I don't want the same thing that's happened to Houston ISD to happen here in Austin. Um, so I would, um, just wanted to express my discontent with that. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Lucchese and I have a high school student who's been a recipient of AISD specialized services since about, um, 7th grade, when he started public school. Um, what I want to say is that even though it's been a roller coaster and it's been challenging, um, from evaluations to ARD to IEP reports and updates, I'm generally pretty pleased with the services and the accommodations that my child receives. Um, my fear is that an outside agent or agency that's not my, um, elected school board, who I do trust, um, would not have my student's best interest at heart. So, that's my concern, just wanting to keep it, um, a little bit closer to me, the parent and the student, by letting my school district make the changes. Thanks. No outside agency, please.
Hello, trustees, my name is Mendy LaJurne and I'm calling in support of our democratically elected school board members and our locally controlled school district and our interim superintendent. As a teacher in Austin ISD, I have witnessed firsthand the consequences of underfunding and understaffing our public schools, as well as the disproportionate effect on our special populations. This dire situation does not call for conservatorship, but rather than requires support, resources, and funding in our state. Austin ISD has spent a better part of $1 billion on a recapture last year. Oversight without providing proper resources is diligent as best. As a member of Education Austin, I fully support your appeal.
My name is Allison Deviney and I'm a very proud life skills teacher here in Austin Independent School District. I want to express that I feel that we should not be under conservatorship because just like when we get new students that come with goals in their IEP, we need time to put those things in place. That's why we as educators have benchmarks and objectives to reach those goals. It takes time and effort and a clear vision to get to the places we want to for each and every one of our special learners. And as a team, we're doing the same. As someone who's very proud to be part of our interim superintendent's superintendent teacher committee, and as someone who is on the executive team committee, I have heard wonderful things put in place that we are currently working on since January to put in place to fix the problems we're having in special education. We need the time, just like we do when we work on goals with our students. We need that same time for us to be able to meet those needs and reach those, those goals as a team. And I think at this time, it is prudent that we are given that time to be able to do that. And a conservatorship would not help us stay on the path that we.
This is Patty Everett, an Austin parent and education advocate. I urge AISD to appeal the TEA conservatorship. The voters in Austin have elected a new board that's taking action to address special ed issues. Not only will TEA slow the process down and create unnecessary bureaucracy, TEA is guilty of selective enforcement on special ed. TEA says AISD has failed to evaluate students in need of special ed services and to provide those services to eligible students. TEA continues, however, to reward charter schools that clearly underserve special education students. The agency has not taken action to investigate whether these charters are in violation of federal law. For example, Basis Texas Charter serves only 2.8% special ed compared to 8, 11.8% for all districts statewide. The Basis Charter in Austin serves only 1% special education students compared to an Austin elementary school less than one mile away that serves 18%. Yet, the commissioner has approved 13 new Basis Charter campuses to open across Texas to open across Texas in the past three years. There's something wrong with this equation. A conservator-
My name is Natalie and I am a parent of a 3rd grader in Austin ISD. My son was identified as possibly having a disability in April of 2021. It took 13 months for his initial evaluation and ARD meeting to happen. Aside from the inexcusable length of time, there are many evaluation notes that were not captured and systemed and resulted in him receiving less services than I know he needs. Now he is nearing the end of 3rd grade. We are waiting again for reevaluations to be completed. Along the way, there were many well-meaning staff and contractors that tried to help him, but it did not undo the harm to my child's educational experience from having to wait for all that time. I hope that in the future, no family has to endure a wait like that and that services are also improved across campuses.
I'm Zenobia Joseph calling in reference to item 4.1, Texas Education Agency Special Investigative Report for the students in special education. I would like the board to be transparent as it relates to the overrepresentation of African-American students in special education twice after the African-American Resource Advisory Commission for help with black students. At the time, African-Americans were 1% of the gifted education, 50% of special education, but only 8% of the district's population. I would also like to call to your attention that the American Rescue Plan Act does permit you to use those funds for targeted intervention for students most in need. That means you can use the funds for African-American students. And lastly, from a technical perspective, just want you to know that my recording as it related to the superintendent was not played for the board, which is why I went in person. I thank you for allowing me to make my comments and have a blessed day. And lastly, I would just ask you to focus on gifted education as it relates to students who may be in special education too.
This concludes public comment. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee Kaufman.
Thank you. So not a question, but an expression of gratitude. I really want to thank all of the callers tonight and I want to thank everyone who's here in person, even though our current policy does not allow for in-person testimony on meetings like this. The fact that you all showed up to express your support for our students and for resolving this issue in whatever way is most effective is greatly appreciated. I really, really want to center on the voices of the students and the parents and family members that we heard today. Each and every complaint that was addressed in the TEA report, each and every evaluation that is overdue, each and every IEP that is not being followed, there is a powerful story behind those of the lives of individuals who are being impacted. And it is absolutely essential that as we make any decisions regarding this, that we do keep focused on the bottom line, which is are we serving our students effectively? And the reminder of the humanity behind these issues is really powerful and important. So I just want to thank all of the people present tonight and those who recorded their messages.
Thank you. Any other trustees? Okay, trustee Hunter.
Good evening. I would also like to thank the callers. Specifically, I would like to thank the students who showed up, who are actually in our boardroom right now for advocating for themselves and for their parents showing them the way to advocate for themselves, to put a face to the numbers. I want you to know that we see you and it is our goal to do better. Thank you.
Any other trustees? Trustee Boswell.
Just a quick clarification. One caller said that interim superintendent Segura had been interim superintendent since long before January and I just want to clarify when that decision was made, that it was made in January. So just want to make sure our facts are straight on that. And then another caller mentioned something that people have been asking for for quite a while and that we used to have an ombuds person or an ombudsman to handle things. And I know we had that position, we got rid of that position. I know we've talked about it a lot from the dais and we've heard a lot about it from our community. And I know that we have been discussing it in budget. I would just love for you to share an update if you don't mind.
Absolutely, trustee Boswell. An ombudsman is within our budget currently. I don't expect that it will fall away from our proposed budget to the board. We certainly recognize that it's an opportunity for us to ensure that our families have access to relay information in a safe way, in a safe manner. We are looking at making perhaps adjustments to focus that area and ombudsmen around special education. We're working through that right now to kind of determine what that might look like. But absolutely, we are committed to having that position come back in our next budget.
Thank you very much.
Any other trustees have questions? Trustee Zapata.
I just want to say thank you to all the callers for all of you also being here and recognizing that, you know, it's going to take all of us to make special ed what it needs to be, the most successful program for our students and know that we will need you, to continue to need you to help us figure that out so we can do it together successfully. Thank you.
Anyway, trustee, what leads you?
So, I mean, the reason I'm here today is because I am one of the parents who waited and waited for an evaluation for my child and for services for my child. And, you know, I'm a teacher. I'm a strong advocate for children and for my child. And I knew if I was having this much difficulty getting the services I needed for my kid, that there is no way that every child is getting what they needed. And my number one priority here is to fix this problem. Day one coming into this office, that has been the number one priority. We putting systems in place. This is a systematic problem. And I would say my number one priority is, you know, I want an evaluation for my child, not just because I want an evaluation in there. We want evaluations, the first step in the process of getting everything our kid needs to have in education. And that is, that has to be priority number one, is that our children are everyone's children and that everyone in the school, in this district, is working to educate all children, to include them, and to give them the education they deserve. We are, and I appreciated the support of my colleagues in this matter, that this is our number one priority. If we are serving our most vulnerable students well, then everyone's being served well. And so it has to be our number one priority and it has been. And we still have a lot of work to do and we are going, we're going to fix it. We have to.
Thank you, trustee. Anyone else? Of course.
Sorry to speak again, but I just wanted to note a couple of things. It's ironic that at a meeting where we're to discuss our services provided for students with disabilities, that we don't have our own systems in place tonight to ensure that we have closed captioning for students or for people who are participating in the room, to ensure that we have that available on our streams that are at home. So I just want to read a message that we kind of bypassed at our last week's meeting. And we had a student who gave us testimony. She began her comments in sign and then she proceeded to talk in a spoken voice. And I wrongly assumed that she was, she had signed what she had then said subsequently and that was incorrect. So I completely missed the message and not one of us in the dais asked for her to confirm or clarify what she said. So, and I want to express gratitude to her parent, Sarah McKenna, who shared with us an email where Addison let us know what her message in sign had said. So she said, she said, here's what I signed. Yes. They, I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. Okay. I apologize profoundly because I just misjudged her student as well. So Addison reported to us what they signed. Hello, my name is Addison. I am a junior at LASSA. Please make these meetings accessible for students, families with disabilities, or the deaf community. Thank you. And then she proceeded to explain how she hopes that by signing this, that she would raise awareness. And she explained how the "they," my goodness, I'm so sorry. I'm making it worse as I try to make it better and I apologize. I, you know, we all have to have the humility to recognize that we are prone to gross mistakes when we're not attending to our families and communities with the attention that we need to. So I apologize for that. They explained how the podium itself is not accessible to people who either because of height or because of access, how the room is not necessarily fully accessible to wheelchairs and how the closed captioning isn't on. And so if someone is in the room who would like to use the closed captioning, it's not always available. And then we've also heard how the Facebook feed is a more reliable way of getting a better transcription at home. So we have a commitment to make that work better. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, to really acknowledge Addison and the message that they shared with us last week that we missed and to use this again as a way of committing to doing better for all of our families.
Thank you, Dr. Kaufman. Any other trustees? Okay. Thank you all very much. It means so much to all of us to have you all here and care so much for our students and our families and our staff. All right. So just as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So we are about to start our discussion on the TEA Special Investigation Report. I know it's been a rough couple of days for many of us, for many of our families, as we heard today. It's been a rough few years. And tonight is really an opportunity to discuss the recent Special Investigation Report by TEA. On Friday, March 31st, the district received the final report by TEA and I would like to ask interim superintendent Mathias Segura to provide an overview and an update on this item. Before you do that, though, if you don't mind, I just wanted to mention, make it really clear that we recognize that the crux of the issue in the TEA investigative report is a backlog of evaluations. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge we realize that's just a small part of many of the issues that we've been hearing from our community and some of us have experienced as parents as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that although most of what you'll hear tonight will be about the evaluation backlog, that is not the only thing that we as a team are focused on. So thank you.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. We'll start off tonight's overview with an update from Pam Kaminsky, who is our attorney, who is assisting both the district and the administration through this process. And then we'll have the special education team take us through some of the work that has been ongoing and some of the next steps. And so at this time, I'll pause and hand it over to Pam.
She- Hello.
Hey Pam, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Take it away.
Thank you. All right. So thank you, Mr. Segura, for introducing me. But again, my name's Pam Kaminsky. I'm an attorney with Broggers Morrison Grover and was hired in late January as special counsel to the board and district to assist with this matter. So thank you for allowing me. I am in the Houston office and thank you for allowing me to participate this evening virtually. I do appreciate you accommodating that. I'm going to take a little time just to clarify a few of the terms that came out of the final report and then I'll explain kind of the appeal process generally and just address a few issues that I think may be helpful for the public as requested by the board. So let me begin by saying in the recommendations, these first couple of slides that you're going to see will be related to my content this evening. So according to the final report, the TEA recommended appointing a management team to direct the operations of the district in the area of special education that is in compliance with Texas Education Code 39A.0028. The report does go on to explain a conservator to oversee the operation of the district. But looking at the language used in the report, it seems functionally to have the same authority because in the report, it actually uses the term "management team" as a conservator management team. So just to back up a little bit with the various levels that we look at for TEA intervention or assistance, perhaps dependent upon your perspective. The first is monitors, a monitor report to the TEA about a district's activities. I can tell you that is what Austin ISD requested from TEA, is Austin ISD has a plan in place. You're going to hear more about that from Dr. Rubinett this evening. There is a plan in place and Austin ISD was seeking for a monitor to assist in relaying the information from what Austin's doing to the state to show them the steps that are being taken to address the concerns. Conservators, though, as I go through these levels, I want to make sure everyone understands, conservators oversee the district's operations. A management team directs the district's operations in areas of insufficient performance. And a board of managers, which we are not part of that with regards to this TEA report, but a board of managers replaces the board of trustees and exercises their powers and duties. So that's more what we're seeing in the news and hearing in the news with regards to your neighbors in HISD. That is not where we are at this point with Austin ISD. The management team is more limited than a board of managers. It's limited in its scope. And here, we understand that the management team would have its scope related to special education. But there is some broad language within the report that indicates areas that may not be, and I'm not quoting it directly, but areas that may not be specifically clarified as special education but may impact special education could be part of that scope. It's important to note that this report at this point is a report to the commissioner of what the recommendations are for the state. So I would say, well, before I get to the appeal process, let me just clarify what the law specifies for a conservator or management team. This is from 39A.003. May direct, the conservator or management team may direct an action to be taken by the principal of a campus, the superintendent of the school district, or the board of trustees of the district. The conservator or management team may approve or disapprove any action of the principal of a campus, the superintendent of the district, or the board of trustees. May not take any action concerning a district election, goes into a little further language there. May not change the number or method of selecting board of trustees. So I think that's important for us to be aware of. May not set a tax rate for the district and may not adopt a budget for the district that provides for spending a different amount exclusive of debts that may be pending from the previously adopted board of trustees. So those are some things the conservator or management team can and cannot do, I think are important for everyone to be aware of as we begin this process. If we can move to the next slide, appeal options. The very first thing that the district needs to consider is whether to request for an informal review. That decision needs to be made by April 17th of 2023. This is a review by the commissioner. As I mentioned, this report essentially goes to the commissioner to determine if these recommendations will be accepted or not. This is the opportunity for the district to take a position with regards to the report and let the commissioner know that position. In this process, it is a written request for informal review. At the discretion of the commissioner, there could be a meeting for further clarification with- could be a meeting for further clarification with the district and the commissioner regarding this informal review. That meeting is not, does not include examination of witnesses. It's not to be compliant with the rules of civil procedure or evidence. It is allowed to be an ex parte communication, but it's a meeting for the district to be able to put forward its position. And so we would, obviously, Austin ISD, if we look at moving forward with appealing, that's something we would want to do in order to have further conversation with the state with regards to the district's position. Other appeals, if the commissioner decides to accept this final report, then at that point, the district could consider making an appeal to SOA, which is the State Office of Administrative Hearings. It's an expedited hearing during the timeframe, though, that is SOA appeal would be pending. The commissioner could move forward already with the recommendations if that's why it's decided out of the informal review. It is an expedited hearing, and so that would happen rather quickly when we look at that process. So that's kind of the appeal process. Some things that I think were important for people to understand that are maybe new to this, I know many in the crowd here are not new to this and well aware, but Dr. Rubinet will give some further explanation. But I think it's important to note, this was a perfect storm, if there ever was one. There was an increase, as I understand, in evaluations and referrals for special education well before COVID lockdown ever happened. That increase was due in large part to the decision of the district to move dyslexia referrals into the special education FIE, full and individual evaluation process, earlier than required by the state. And then immediately following that, COVID happened, and the lockdown ended up impacting the ability to do evaluations. Districts were ill-equipped. Austin was not alone in trying to figure out how to evaluate students virtually or waiting until students return to school in order to get those done. During this same time, there was a decrease in staff. Many evaluators left the district. Many teachers left the district. There was a huge decrease in staff. There were staffing positions available to be filled, but they were not at that point able to fill them. There is a plan now in place to continue to move forward with trying to increase those evaluation staff members. In addition, there were multiple TEA complaints, all occurring at or near the same time regarding evaluations, referrals for special education evaluations. And while those individual student complaints have been addressed, that led to the concern of is there a systemic problem in Austin ISD that led us to this position here? So with all of that background I've kind of thrown at you here this evening, I'm going to turn it over at this point to Dr. Rubinet, Executive Director for Special Education, who has a little more detail for you regarding that big picture I've tried to lay out.
Good evening, interim superintendent Segura, Board of Trustees, President Singh, and the public who are here with us this evening. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, I have alongside me Dr. Cherry Lee, who is our interim executive director of instructional delivery and inclusion, honestly, a newly created position. Thank you for your support, Board, and our team. And then Dr. Teresa Rocha Gill, who is our executive director over compliance, evaluations, and sort of systems and operations for our school district, for our department. If I can, as a quick point of privilege, and I know time will be of the essence, is I too have an obligation here to kind of go through a sequence of things with all of you and with our public here to unpack that. But it is not only not lost on us, but it is greatly appreciated by our team and by our community that there are team members here, there are students, there are families that are here representing the voices of over 10,000 students who receive services through special education in our school district, and an additional 7,500 who receive 504 services and supports. We likewise know that we'll talk to you about sort of this legal process. It's the unfortunate sort of communication pattern we want to share this evening. But at the same time, it's not lost on our team or the commitment of this team that our goal is not only to simply address and satisfy TEA needs. Our goal and our emphasis and our desire, and certainly I know it is yours as a board and an interim superintendent, is to fulfill the desires and really the expectations of sort of that North Star, your vision of being that inclusive home for all learners here in Austin ISD with those high outcomes. And this is not a high outcome. This is a standard. So we have higher outcomes in mind. And we appreciate that. There's a perfect storm, but there's also a perfect opportunity that has come into play that needs to center disability and the needs of our students in any and all conversations that we have. The guiding principles for inclusion that were developed in partnership with the community before I commenced in this role, really talk about not baking that in after the fact, but really putting that in as a primary part. I recognize that tonight, this is not an update to the board about any and all things nor to the public. But in fairness and out of respect for the public, we need to be honest and forthright about how we arrived here. But we likewise need to be compelling and intentional about the actions that I know we all desire to take and sincerely appreciate both your support and your guidance and your direction in helping us to get there for our kids. With that in mind, I'll go through the components that are in front of you in terms of a brief history to date related to TEA actions. I'm not here to speak about the corrective action related to the state that occurred in 2018, or really the discontinuance in the Dear Colleague letter to our state that was operationalized in 2017 to, you heard that from callers, to discontinue sort of capping down on the evaluations for students. This is about Austin ISD and trying to be about proactive and intentional about meeting the needs of our students. But I'd be remiss not to acknowledge that there were a multitude of factors on that front that certainly informed or had an influence on where we are. So the actual connection to where we are with the agency on the conservatorship recommendation comes from a collection of TEA complaints. There's certainly a complaint process that moved forward. And it started because of evaluations and a delay of evaluations during the timeframe, really in 19 and in 20. And it started as a genesis in terms of these actions with a complaint that's noted there that was brought on behalf of two students by Disability Rights Texas in October of 2020. You don't need to follow the entirety of the timeline layer, but about a year later, let me clarify, shortly after that was done, there is a timeline upon which a district should respond with promptness and with a period of time to the state, generally within like 10 days, around any of the data or things we need to provide, and then seek either direction guidance, or if it's corrective action or substantiation of a complaint, we address those within that timeframe. At that time, in October of 2020, the district actually moved with the agency and not being able to fulfill the request associated with that particular complaint to what was known as a systemic corrective action plan, because those months from October to December had lapsed. And so when those two students and couldn't be addressed, it really reflected to a broader piece of what are the systemic matters that need to be addressed for not only two students but any or all students. So then there was a special investigation one year later. Generally, when there's a systemic corrective action or a corrective action, and the team will keep me honest if I misspeak at all, you have a period of time up until a year. A year is too long for families, and understandably, I'm talking about how it's written in the code and in the process, to fulfill those actions and to fulfill the completion of those expectations. And that didn't occur in that timeline. And so that is when the agency issued a notice of special investigation. There were other components in that notice of special investigation, that IR 2021-08001 that you have there, but it likewise referenced that time lapse of that initial October 2020 TEA complaint. In the mix of all of this, and this is not the purpose of this evening, but a timeline for transparency with our board, there was a federal suit filed in March of 2021. And that is part of, in Houston, with JR et al. and the Disability Rights Texas versus Austin ISD. And that is still pending. Let me move forward. Each year, we also report on the state performance plan indicators. And so there's a lot of indicators in the state performance plan. But two I want to highlight are state performance plan 11 and state performance plan 12. And those are related to timely evaluations for school-aged children, which is state performance plan 11. And then likewise, the child finer timely evaluations for early childhood for state performance plan 12. There were corrective actions connected not only to the systemic pieces for that TEA complaint, but where the district could not fulfill its expectations and the requirements for evaluations in a timely way. That was reported in the state performance plan data. Again, the agency and the Office of Special Program Monitoring comes forward, and they issue a corrective action and work with us in terms of what are the things that are going to be done to mitigate and then resolve that issue, for lack of a better description. Again, think of the 365, the one-year timeline goes into play to fulfill that. But when you're looking at systemic in the eyes of the agency and certainly in the eyes of IDEA and the federal law, timely evaluations and the expectations around that, to be very transparent, that's not determined by TEA. It's codified in the law, and I'll walk us through that a bit. That's an expectation for all districts. It's an expectation across the state and country in terms of the fulfillment of that timely evaluations for the many reasons that you all have heard this evening. And so that corrective action was issued in October of 2021 for evaluations in the 2020-2021 school year. And that was the timeframe to complete that for the prior year. And we did not fulfill that. And so that second year came to be, and two things happened. We don't fulfill it for the prior year, and we don't fulfill it for the following year because it's compounding over time. And so the agency moved that corrective action for substantial noncompliance, or what they call continuing noncompliance, to the division of sanctions. And then they issued a new corrective action for last year's data, that 21-22 data. You all are aware, now the public is clearly aware as well, that the state then came forward and issued, we had not received that special investigation report, and issued a final investigative report, the draft that you received on December 30th, right before the end of the 2022 school year, and then your response, et cetera. So that's part of that piece of timeline and context. But there are other factors at play that are not, that's TEA response, but sort of what are the context pieces at play here within our district? So I'm going to share some additional background elements. So we certainly already had going into 2018 and 19, a beginning of some backlog starting to happen. And then in 2019, our district decided that they wanted to complete full individual evaluations for dyslexia two years prior to the state being required to do so. So it's a good thought. It's certainly now codified in the laws and expectation. But the desire was to fulfill that and to see in light of the Dear Colleague letter, to see components around the cap, to ensure that there wasn't a limitation in the completion of those full individual evaluations if they were queuing through through the system. So that's 19. And then going into 1920, then the pandemic comes in. And then the backlog did increase, and it was exacerbated further. The dyslexia evaluations, and Dr. Lee, at one point, she can remind me, we were doing, we were doing prior a screener through our 504 screener process. It was substantially faster, but it wasn't a full individual evaluation. And there's good reason for looking at a broader piece for specific learning disability or otherwise for services and supports. But that's where we were. So it substantially really, in the 2020, it accelerated in terms of compounding because there was a limitation of in-person testing. We had a number of evaluators who, not only were we not in person in school, there are some protocols and aspects of the testing environment, et cetera. That TEA corrective action is just noted there in that kind of, that 2020 that you noticed there. And then the evaluator shortage, that is actually part of a state and national challenge. I think it was noted in your report, or your meeting with the media and others. In Travis County alone, our entire county, there's just over 260 licensed specialists in school psychology. It's a substantial limit in terms of the area. And so we do have a combination, and thank you to any and all of you out there listening, that are LSSPs and diagnosticians who work with us. But there are certain elements of testing and assessment that only can be completed by an LSSP, and there are certain elements that certainly can be completed by a diagnostician as well. So that limitation locally and in the central Texas area is a particular challenge, and a number of them are working in different places as well. But I want to put a caveat. The shortage was persisting and at the request of the board and interim superintendent Segura, I likewise have to acknowledge, and this will come up later, that that was substantially increased at the time of an additional reorganization that was done here in our school district and over a period of time up until then. So I'll put it in a by-the-numbers slide that will be forthcoming. But in 1920, 29 evaluators left our school district, only two of whom retired. They resigned. Now, that was also during the pandemic, and there could have been a variety of reasons, some of which we've had an opportunity to explore much in depth, and there was coverage around that as well. And then 2021, an additional 20 did as well. So I would be remiss, out of respect for the request that was made from you, not to say that that increases the additional challenge with the shortage that was existing and then creating the systems and supports. As we returned from the pandemic and more to in-person learning, we certainly have seen increased referral rates. One of the things that we want to do is we certainly don't want to limit if that is a need for a student for evaluation services. But we likewise know that we have to have strong core tier-one instruction. We need to have access to scaffolds or accommodations and appropriate pieces for all learners, because that compounds not only the issue, but we want our students to have access to high-quality instruction regardless of any place that they are in the system, and even more so if they have particular areas where they need appropriate supports. The board intervened, and some of the board that was here in 2021 then had training around scorecard development, started to begin to discuss the importance of a new scorecard measure. That's when special education was part of scorecard goal one. You all had some training in and around that, made some decisions to bake that into your scorecard. And then in 2022, the completion of the Stetson Report, that's when some of the systems revisions, sort of, there was a genesis but not fully operationalized, started to come into place with the team. The implementation of a new IP data system, some of which has had some wrinkles and some challenges, but likewise, being a compliance system, having some tracking pieces with a revised entry and referral process, et cetera, and substantial testing during the use, with the use of contractors. I'd also need to let you know that in 2019, there was not summer testing that occurred, and that was not due to the pandemic. It was sort of writing what were the real needs within the department and having the systemic structures to track that. And that had been some of a practice, but not substantially like we're doing that now. And then in 2020, of course, there could be none at all altogether. I'm going to move more expeditiously through the next ones. So thank you. Why does this matter and why now? Well, it matters for a lot of reasons outside of the things that I'm going to discuss here. It matters for every child and every student. But it matters in terms of how did TEA arrive at this? Because in October of 2021, the way that they look at this, and there are certainly legal minds better than mine that can speak to this, sort of the timeline, the one-year-up timeline on that systemic corrective action came into play for October 2021. And so that's also when that special investigation started thereafter. So then November of 2022, that year two completed on that systemic corrective action, and then year one had passed for the special investigation. Again, on that Again, on that State Performance Plan indicator, that corrective action pieces, likewise you'll see by October of 2022, that year one had been up and moved to that Division of Sanctions. And so that's also part of the timeline when the TEA communicated with you all. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, from the TEA Child Fine Evaluation Network, this is actually their slide, but you'll see that it takes you through the referral for initial evaluations, the notice of, of action and responsiveness from the campus and the district, if there's consent obtained. And then likewise, the provision of services in the holding of an IEP meeting, it's called an IEP meeting in every other state except for Texas, we'll call it an ARD meeting, but the, the provision of services and determining on those two prongs, if a child had been identified as a provision of services provided in a timely way. And those numbers on the bottom, I want to focus primarily on the two, which is the, sort of the blue section underneath that 45. You have 45 school days to complete that initial evaluation. It can be made at a different time for a reevaluation depending upon the decision points of the ARD meeting and the ARD committee and what they deliberate, but that 45 days is our general sort of benchmark, if you will, our timeline and expectation. And then upon the completion of that, there's 30 additional calendar days to hold an IEP meeting, whether a child qualifies or not, and have that discussion and review those components with folks. So it's a solid emphasis on that. Interim Superintendent Segura.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Robinett. So as Dr. Robinett had mentioned, there had been some key actions over the last year that, that can predated, you know, even just my involvement here in this role. So kind of looking back to May of 2022, really using the Stetson Report and having that be made publicly available in the presentation that was made to the board, at that point, the board did make some budget allocations to bring in additional vendors to help with that, that load of work at that point in the evaluations, and that was certainly a move in, in the right direction. Later in the summer, we also went through some structural changes, and we actually promoted the Special Education Department within the organization. One of the things that's important to note is, is the location of a, of a department in an organization really, it reinforces kind of the importance of that work, right? And that's, and it's important that the leadership is able to, to move through the organization and be properly supported to ensure that this work progresses. And so that was then, and that's when Dr. Robinett moved into her role as the Assistant Superintendent for Special Education. I also want to point out that we did make some additional adjustments around training opportunities and Leadership Institute, but the kind of momentum really began to build in November of 2022, when the new board was elected and as we transitioned into the, the new year. And so as I take you all to the next slide, Slide nine, in December of 2022, that's when I came on. It's actually very, very late, I think, with like a week to go in December of 2022. But at that time, it was clear to me, it was made clear in the interview process, it was made clear publicly, it was made clear in every conversation I had with each and every trustee on the dais here, that special education was the single priority amongst all others that had to be put at the top. It was clear that in the interim phase of the work, just being intentional and developing a true plan for how to recover and build systems was something that was going to be the focus of, of the work that we had together. And so you can see here in January of 2023, we created the Priority 1A Plan. And, and the reason that we say that is because it's important to me that we communicate in that way every single time. If I'm meeting with district leadership, I'm meeting with principals, I'm meeting with, with community members, and we talk about all these various initiatives, I talk about special education as Priority 1A, and so we often refer to it as Priority 1A. It's also important, I think, that our community knows that this organization is not in a good place and won't be in a good place until special, special education services are where they need to be. And I've made that crystal clear for our entire leadership team. Since then, very grateful that the board created the ad hoc committee, allowing more opportunities for our team to work collaboratively with y'all to progress this work. You know, going, you know, month to month and getting feedback just doesn't provide the direction that, that we need to be successful. We were able to quickly develop a dashboard. It was something that, that was, was needed to assist our administrators, our principals, in order to understand kind of where each and every student was in any process that we had. And that clarity has really helped move the work, right? It helps you plan. We were able to make some adjustments within the organization to reallocate resources because we wanted to ensure that, you know, those that were leading the work weren't necessarily the ones, you know, spending hours and hours in worksheets and spreadsheets. We really wanted to kind of create the support so that they could be more effective. The other thing that we quickly did was make an adjustment on the step-by-step training for inclusive schools, which was a recommendation out of the Stetson Report. We had initially thought that might occur in the summertime. And again, you know, as an organization, we felt that this is something that had to occur immediately. And this is one of those things where you have to really consider how, you know, human capital and finance can come into the space and help us make those decisions to where they can actually get done, right? Because to approach it in the way that we did, we actually had to create cohorts within our campuses. The campuses had to come into central office over a two-day training separated by a week or two, but you got to think about the human capital aspect. We got to make sure that we have substitutes. We got to make sure that we have the budget to support the substitutes. Like all of those things had to be thought through and built up quickly. And so there's been a lot of alignment, certainly now as we move through each of these initiatives, we'll be cosigning to ensure that everybody understands that the administration and the board, that we are truly aligned, and that you're seeing a sense of transparency. We are going to share information with our community to help them understand where we are in various initiatives, but most specifically special education. And so one of the things that, that I think, as you move on to the next slide, that I think is worth sharing that a lot of individuals don't see, it's some of the work products that have come out of, out of these initiatives. And so I, I really want to commend the Special Education Department and for, you know, giving me grace as I've challenged them in providing the detail that was necessary to prove that we could actually do this. And I believe that we can. This here is, is one sheet of, I think, nine, that communicate task by task, deliverable by deliverable, everything that's going to be required to, to truly improve the system the way that it needs to be improved. And this is not a six-month plan. This is not a one-year plan. This is truly an 18-month, 24-month plan. And it has to be because the work is, it's, it's a large system. It takes thoughtful initiatives, and, and we have to be really intentional about the work if we have it, if we're going to do this together. And so what's great about this type of strategic planning is that it allows us to track milestones. And so on the next slide, which you'll see is just a brief tool that we are beginning to use as we track these initiatives. This one here is, is Special Education Plan. And so as you can see, there are hundreds and hundreds of tasks that we're constantly monitoring, the team is providing updates. We don't want it to be a, a tool that isn't used to progress the work. We want it to be a tool that helps inform the work. And I really very, very much appreciate the team's kind of response to it and supporting the work, and it helps every other division understand their role in the work, which I think is equally important. I think that shared responsibility is something that we're going to continue to reinforce. It's something that I'll talk about each and every time I, I speak. And so just excited to see kind of how the work has progressed over a short period of time, but we do have a, a long ways to go. And so with that, I'll hand it back over to Dr. Robinett to take us through the numbers.
Thank you, Interim Superintendent Segura. And, and excited about the, the recovery plan and putting things into action, admittedly. I mean, this has been an accelerated process to codify that in that way. We do plan with your support to have that evolve and grow with our community. It's part of those initiatives. I know that's both an expectation, I appreciate your support in and around that, and with leadership, because there will be multiple things that will evolve over time that will get better and better, and we'll need to have new actions and new steps, and so that momentum is going to be critically important. So thank you for that. Harnessing that collective capacity is a huge part of this.
And Dr. Robinett, I think you're bringing up a really good point, which is why each and every time we have a meeting with the trustees and a board retreat, I always try to replace your sheets with updated plans because they are evolving. Just, I wanted to make that connection. Thank you, Dr. Robinett.
So this slide is just referred to as like the by-the-numbers slide. Some of this was already depicted in some media and other pieces, but currently we have, I think they had it slightly off, but we have 22 evaluators out of 72 available positions. Our fill rate is about 29%. So a third of those positions are currently filled. We substantially use contractors, which we're grateful to those who, who participate and support us through contracting. We're going to be working throughout the summer as well. But our ultimate desire is to have those filled. And likewise, should we need contracted services, to have that supplement, a robust workforce for, that can support our students and provide high-quality evaluations as part of Team AISD. I was asked, and there's the numbers there, 58 evaluators have resigned or retired from 1920 through 2122. You can see sort of the numbers there during those time periods. What's critically important to know is that then puts us at that 22 evaluators. You can start to see mathematically the impacts of that for a variety of reasons. About 4,000 evaluations were completed from the last day of school last year until the end of last month. So there's certainly a robust attention and focus on this, but it is likewise important to note, and I'm going to actually go out of order, at the bottom, there's a, it's a dynamic system. There's also an additional inflow of things that are coming in. So just since January of 2023, we've had an inflow of an additional 1,263 evaluation requests. And then you'll see that component around what is in and out of timeline. Again, you can do the count on 45 days, you can do the count on what the impacts of that, and likewise with the inflow coming in, how do we prioritize? And likewise, every student, every, every number represents a student or a child or a family. And so we take that very much to heart. And since March of 2021, when there was that component around the Disability Rights Texas suit that you saw coming into play, being filed, there's been over 8,000 evaluated, approximately 8,000 evaluations completed. So in addition to myself and Dr. Lee and, and Dr. Rocha Gill being here and Ms. Kaminsky, we likewise have some team members, Dr. Frances Stetson, our national expert, and I think Brian Malachuk is here with her as well. But I just wanted to let you know that it is clear to, before this ever occurred with our Board of Trustees, and certainly since I was, started with this team and, and saw their work, this has always been more than about evaluation monitoring for us and riding the ship for our kids. And so that, you're familiar with the Stetson Report findings and really having through leadership, next slide, I'm sorry, Dr. Reach, the, the unified vision and sharing and moving from a clear district vision, I mean, I think you're doing that here now, guided by clear vision of services for students with disabilities all throughout the system, and that's a unified Board of Trustees working in unity and in unison with a collaborative team, with your interim superintendent, and with us as a department in our families and communities. And then that affects the leadership and all of our system work throughout our, our district as well. Instruction as well, those five sort of components of special education. The, the unique thing about the step-by-step for inclusive schools is it really starts to address multi-leveled instruction. You heard some of the folks talk about universal design and baking in on the front end instructional practices and appropriate accommodations and modifications. Dr. Stetson reminds me, those are special education terms. We want the appropriate scaffolds in place from the very beginning in that tier one, and then appropriately, of course, those additional pieces as well. But staffing, capacity building, and family engagement. And we've come to you before with, we, we now refer to them as priority pillars for our students, not that, that those are around inclusive practices and inclusion and high-quality instruction, and then evaluations and compliance. Recognizing that components in the special education report, the, the Stetson Report remind us that until we have the appropriate support, communication, connective and connection and collective capacity throughout our system and in partnership with our parents and communities, those are words right now, and operationalizing them throughout for every child in our system is important. So the elimination of those silos and the portents of that vision is there. So I'd like to talk about a whole less, next slide, the holistic approach to addressing some of the systemic issues. I'm going to focus first on, and Ms. Kaminsky and others could, can chime in if needed, on the components that were in your action plan and your response to the state, specific to the, the issues of the backlog that, that brought forth the, the findings that were included in that, that, that special investigation report. So the holistic report, the approach you can see here around a number of evaluations and IEP tracking, there are several steps there around an internal tracking system, the alignment of the processes. This summer was training folks, including our principals and everyone, about like, let's actually have a systemic and universal process that we implement. Let's check if that's working, what isn't working. Let's have a better way to hold ourselves accountable. There's your dashboard and each other. So that's what came into play there. The training and development for campus administrators around that tracking. And then this insufficient staffing and backlog includes the allocation of funds for contract evaluators, aggressive testing, testing summer holidays and weekends. We tested 135 students over spring break. We'll be testing substantially at multiple testing sites. I think there are four. Dr. Gill will hold me accountable around that over the summer. And we've been working with the creativity of the, the team behind us. Thank you, Mr. Ramos and, and others, around thinking about not only through contracting agencies, but individual contractors, bringing in teachers and other, I'm sorry, diagnosticians and LSSPs from across the state who want to come during the summer. We would love for them to make Austin their home long-term, but in the meantime, that's, that's a change in practice where some of the bureaucratic pieces were, were removed in terms of the limitations to really try to accelerate growing some of that. You've seen things about the evaluator incentive plan and a robust recruitment plan and campaign, really in partnership with the human capital team that's been throughout, and a grow our own diagnostician initiative that is part of a grant that was written through the dyslexia department or 504 Dyslexia and, and Special Education Department to grow folks for that. And we're, we're excited about some of the, the promising findings thus far of working in partnership with that. And then the accountability and reporting, a number of those have already been mentioned by interim superintendent Segura, but that, that timely pieces, the, the evaluation tracking, those are the things there. The next one is around further improvement efforts, and you all have seen aspects of this slide, some only, and, and some prior presentations about how that goes into those five areas around Dr. Stetson's, well, as she reminds me, the AISD's plan that she helped to guide in the very beginning, but that it's our work, it's ours to carry, it's our opportunity. Dr. Stetson, thank you for her partnership in and around that. But I want to talk about leadership vision and systems that are slightly different from what you've seen. So our department and our staff have been working with Dr. Stetson and their support team on developing action plans, not only those you see here in, in the, in the broader piece, but in growing our own department and, and making some of those interconnections. So that we call it the, she calls it the checking the big boxes sort of syllabus for us. We've had four or six meetings thus far, or it's like, we've had a few of the four to six meetings, I'm sorry, that we have four to six scheduled with her. And you'll find that in the, the recovery plan. You'll see elements of they're going to look at this, they're going to do this, they're going to do this. And so that's around establishing systems for evaluations through state and federal timelines. That's around a, a increasing capacity of the Special Education Department and our principals and assistant principals and instructional staff to achieve quality standards for students with disabilities. And then likewise, another ad hoc work group around, it's a work group around improving IEP development and implementation for increased student success, working around PlAFS and goals and in partnership with families. So it's been some, some exciting pieces associated with that work bringing into play, but there's, there's a long way to, to go before that's fully operationalized for all of our families, but that's the work that we've been doing. We have had collaboration with the academics team, school leadership, multilingual, et cetera, and, and that was, I want, I want to kind of say, one of the things that is unique about that in recent times, as, as there's sort of a redesign of the curriculum materials and other pieces, there's been a challenge for all of our central office team members, who have a role in that, to understand how do we build that in first for all students, the appropriate multi-levels instruction or universal design and those, those key points of what we call multiple entry points for learning. So as a, as a result of that, all of the academics team that is a part of that, before we commenced with the broader group of all of our schools, we, those folks went through the two-day step-by-step inclusive school practices for schools, but at a central office level. Because what we can have is coaches and others and people who are working in those structures or people who are helping to develop those pieces and the, the curriculum and materials not know how the system needs to move forward together. They have to be the right types of resources together and centering that work. Last but not Last but not least, you've seen the, the instructional piece, Mr. Segura mentioned, the step-by-step for inclusive schools. We're in our final set of four vertical teams. Who did I have today? Eastside Memorial, no, Eastside's our early college high school today. I think it's Crockett's vertical team tomorrow. We're almost there. But one of the things that has been, thank you for the, the commission to me, is at the start of every one of those, I think I might have missed one second day, at the start of every one of those, I go on your behalf and I say, thank you. One of the things we've not done is brought all general ed. The team is required to have a, a collection of, a leadership team with general education, special education, another, another student or support population, it could be multilingual or other teacher there, the principal must attend, and they collectively work together. I, I am, would be remiss if I didn't say that there was a principal, a couple of principals, the feedback has been positive, I think you all have seen that, but we say to them that this is why 1A is so important. Priority 1A, bringing that is, is on behalf of all of our board. And I say, I'm sorry to the math teachers, it's priority one, we, because one is the first number, okay, negative numbers, we can get into all that, but it's the first number and A is the first letter, like there, this is the, the piece. And so we need you to not only go through this and say, that was a good training, but to carry this forward. How is that going to be woven into the fabric of experiences? And how will you champion for our students in these spaces? And every time we're designing and planning, in additional, there's, there's technical assistance stays. So we have funded for members of the expertise of Dr. Stetson or team to go and visit and not visit, to work. I mean, they're working in support with our campuses around their real students and helping to guide that. And we hope that partnership continues until we really solidify that as being a part of our DNA overall for the work of our kids. The capacity building has been throughout the year, and we want to continue to work moving forward. We had, for the first time that I can recall, some required essentials courses for special education and general education staff or teachers this summer. And so both of those were important. That was a new commence, something commenced out of the, the guiding principles and other recommendations that came forward. But we will be likewise moving forward into that for the next summer to build in those and, and weave that into the work that we're doing as well. The final pieces are around, next slide please, around where, where you're going and where, in terms of the special education recovery plan and the areas specific, again, around evaluations. We will be setting very challenging goals, and we already have challenging goals for the spring and for the summer and fall testing. And I've mentioned sort of how we plan to get there. The systemic tracking will be doubled down. It's just begun, but now we're operationalizing the systems that come into place, very systemic work around that tracking of our needs. And then the retention of quality contractors needs to continue. It certainly needs to continue until we can really lift this, all boats in terms of this for all of our students and families, and that we can recover to a point where we can keep that plan moving forward with quality evaluators, please come to Austin I S D if you're interested as part of our overall fabric of our, our district. And then our staffing, the robust incentives will increase, the recruitment and hiring campaign is underway, and then systemic pieces are around the reorganization of the district staff. You've, you've heard some of that here to address special education needs, the monthly progress of your own ad hoc committee. And the last component, which I mentioned.
I think we need the next slide.
Oh, we move to the next slide?
No, I think we're, don't we need the next slide?
Okay, we will move. To increase collaboration with our community groups is something we need to do more and a better job of and alignment to the feedback to those types of recommendations. So where we're going, this is just a summary slide of the components that are really noted on the prior slides and that, that last slide there. And we have been in partnership, working with the agency. And again, that's around sort of the compliance component, but we don't want compliance to be ever our standard. We want quality, we want better services and supports for all of our students, and we likewise want to be proud of having our great families here in Austin I S D and, and having the services that their children and families deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that really informative and dense presentation, but I think it gave us a lot of good information. So thank you, thanks to the team and also to Pam. So I wanted to see if trustees had any questions or comments about any of this. Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. This is for Ms. Kaminsky, just for clarification purposes. Can you give us the difference between a monitor and a conservator?
So a monitor is really considered at a first level. Sorry, I'm seeing two of me. Can you guys hear and see me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. I just looked up and saw myself in mirror reflective version there. Okay, I want to make sure we're good. So a monitor is someone who comes into the district and reviews what is occurring in the district activities and then reports that information to T E A, whereas a conservator oversees the district's operations. So they would be more involved in overseeing and directing the activity.
So they can actually make decisions then?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else, trustee Hunter?
Yes.
Okay. I know you've got more.
You know, I've got more. And then really just, I have a question about like the administrative appeal. Of course, we, we do want help, right? Like I've heard people say that, like, we do want help, but I'm not sure we want that help. Wouldn't administrative appeal signal an unwillingness to improve?
So the appeal process would initially begin with an informal review being requested, and so we would make a statement in writing to T E A that we want this to be considered based on what the district would like to see happen versus what is being recommended in the report. So that's the first approach. And then from there, if the district is dissatisfied, if you will, with the commissioner's decision with regards to that, then we can make an appeal administratively to SOA. Again, SOA is the State Office for Administrative Hearings. That decision would be final, though, whatever SOA decides, and that would be an expedited hearing. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other trustees? Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I also have a question for Ms. Kaminsky. It's also related to the appeal process. If I'm reading this slide correctly, if I'm understanding what you're saying, does the appeal apply only to the findings of the report? Or could subsequent actions directed to the district by this team of managers also be appealed? Or is it just the, the appointment of the team managers as, as is suggested or recommended by the, by the report?
Well, there are a couple of things that are recommended by the report. One of them is for the team of managers. The other is for an outside audit. And so the appeal would be questioning both of those, I believe, but that's something that I think may be more appropriate for discussion in closed session as attorney-client privilege, as we talk through kind of what your options may be. I just don't want to waive any of that here in public.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other trustees? Trustee Boswell.
First, I want to say thank you to my colleagues and to the administration for choosing a really extensive level of communication and transparency. We found out about this on Friday. It was very quickly decided among our special education ad hoc committee, started meeting with interim superintendent Segura, got together, and it was very quickly decided that this meeting was important. It was important to call this meeting to share with the public. It was very quickly decided to open the meeting to public comment. And we wanted to hear from the community, the community obviously wanted to be heard. Very important to go quickly, put a statement out, have a press conference, answer as many questions as the media chose to ask, have meetings with principals yesterday, really appreciate the move to make sure principals were informed so their staff and families could be informed, because we know that everyone's had questions. Met yesterday with some members of our special education community. Again, the meeting went very long and it was with, with some of our strongest advocates and was a very, something that didn't have to be done. So I want to start with an appreciation of that and an appreciation of everything that you are sharing. It's, it's a lot of dates and plans and numbers, but it's, our community is curious and they want to know, and you are helping everyone understand. So huge thank you to all of that and, and to really sharing the good work that's done that, including the giant chart, because a lot of that's been done behind the scenes so far. So I really appreciate. Just want to share appreciation first. And, and also want to share an appreciation for the systems that we have seen being created. The, the report that we have received from T E A is full of the word "systems." It's full of evidence of a lack of systems. And we are seeing systems be created and start going to work. So really want to show appreciation for that. Pam, I have some further questions about the powers of the conservator, and, and no, we can talk about it more in executive session, but reading about Houston's situation over the years, I remember one of the, the actions, I think in 2019, was that the conservator ordered the Houston I S D board to stop their search for a superintendent just as they were about to do final interviews. So my understanding, I appreciate you sharing kind of some of the powers, but that they're quite extensive. Just want to confirm that, and I know we can talk about it more in executive session.
Yes, so their powers, if you will, are somewhat extensive, but there are certain things that there are limits to with regards to budgeting, Board of Trustees, elections, things along those lines that I think is somewhat reassuring, hopefully, for you to know that there are some limits in place, but largely they are able to direct action, they are able to approve and disapprove of actions. There's definitely some steps that they can put in place. From the report, it is directed as related to special education. But when we look at this particular special education issue, we know it alone stretches beyond special education, in particular, human resources, if you will, because we are trying to hire evaluation staff and teachers. And so there is the potential for it to reach, obviously, into that area. And so it's not clearly defined at this stage of the game, but we, we will get there. And that is part of what, if the board chooses to appeal, something that we would be seeking for clarification.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And, and that said, we were hoping for a collaborative process with anyone who's, who's partnering with us. Obviously, that's the goal and service of the students that we've been talking about tonight. So I appreciate that. I would also love a little clarity on the duty to consider community voice. You know, we, we heard from our community tonight, I know that's a value we hold very strongly here. It's in the education code as one of the roles of trustees. We know we've chosen an interim superintendent who we know values that and making sure that's happening throughout our system. And I know, you know, even talking about the plan that didn't fit on the PowerPoint very well, fits in the book by being folded up, that there's been discussion about talking with our community about that too, that our community has a lot of lived experience, a lot of expertise, both our staff and our families. And, and is there an obligation to include community voice in the process when a conservator is in place?
I, I think in light of the information that has come forward, that it is important for Austin I S D, if a decision is made to appeal, needs to include that as part of the reason why we are objecting basically to the, the report as it stands at this point, because there is a community outreach. I listened to the public comments just as you did this evening. There are some that seem to be in favor of this, but largely, it seems the community realizes that local control is of benefit here. And so I think it's important that we use that information as we move forward in the appeal process, that we make sure the commissioner knows how important the local control is to our families in able to, in order to be able to serve students.
Okay, thank you, Pam. And then just a couple more comment and question. People are asking what changes we'll see on campuses, and I know the whole point in adjusting our systems and improving our systems and ensuring students are getting what they need is that, of course, there are some needed changes on campus, but I think people are also seeking reassurance that the schools I love, that we love remain the schools that we love with all the richness and excitement and joy that's on our campuses. So I know that things are fuzzy and not completely in focus now. This is, you know, 72 hours old for us, but I think as we start having that information, the more that can be shared, the better. So I just want to share that I'm hearing that. I assume my colleagues are, some of them may be hearing that. Also want to share a real appreciation for the new work to make sure we have safety in what's shared, transparency in what's shared, a really safe environment for people to speak out without fear of retaliation. And I know that's a value our board holds extremely highly. It is a value we considered very strongly in choosing Mr. Segura, and it's a value that we need to continue to communicate throughout our system, because when you don't have safety and security to speak up, that's how problems happen. And that's how systems get broken, and that's, you know, how these things don't surface in the ways that they should. So I want to speak to that, my, my personal commitment, but also what I continue hearing and, and the importance of that as we work through this, and, you know, other things that we know we can do better. Our community has a lot of the answers and they're, they're, they tell us because they want to fix it with us. So just want to share a commitment to that, an ongoing commitment to that. And then one question for the administration. I know the timeline for the appeal is, the appeal is due on April 17th. I know that STAR testing starts on April 18th. Obviously, some important dates that take a lot of resources and in the, in the lead-up. And I want to be sure as we consider an appeal, that a focus on that doesn't interfere with our capacity to support our campuses and our staff and our students in the lead-up to the STAR, and welcome any thoughts about that.
Trustee Boswell, I certainly appreciate the comment. You know, preserving the space and limiting disruptions is critical as we move into the testing period. For us as an organization, as I've been speaking with my leadership team here, we will be kind of trying to identify what resources will be required as we move through the appeal process if the board chooses to do so. But at this time, we're, we're not anticipating a significant, I would say, challenge for our administrators in regards to the appeal process as it pertains to their campus communities. That, that is something we would avoid at all costs.
Thank you. And Dr. Rocha Gill, Dr. Lee, Dr. Robinett, thank you for all that you've shared and all that you're doing.
Trustees, any other questions or comments? Yes. You can go ahead.
I know it's, I'm not, just so as far as, I wanted to also express my appreciation. You know, things moved very, very quickly, and I very much appreciated having the trustees, the ad hoc trustees and other trustees with, with us, working through these various obstacles over the last 72 hours. I can certainly tell our community that there were many, many late meetings that we had together trying to identify the strategy that best suits our community as we communicate out in a transparent way. So that's, that's just, it's good to let everybody know that that, that is very helpful, and it, and it does mean a lot.
Go ahead. Vice President Foster.
Yeah, I just want to, I guess, share and extend the note of gratitude for the work that is being done and has been done. I, I think that part of what's been going on is that we've been working hard for a long time, and I think what I'm seeing or perceiving and what feedback from community is sharing with me is their perception as well, is that we are now working smarter and there is an air of possibility. So this moment is in some ways very disappointing because we finally have felt that we are turning a corner in a really powerful and profound way. And there's always going to be a lag time, like we have to prove it before the community kind of comes with us, because we've been saying we're going to get better for a long time and we haven't yet. And, and yet I do have that optimism, and it's an optimism I haven't had in a long And yet, I do have that optimism, and it's an optimism I haven't had in a long, long time. So, here we are in this moment, and as a note was dropped on us at 3:30 on a Friday before a three-day weekend, following earlier reports that were delivered to us on December 30th, going into, you know, a break. What happened over the weekend was that I ended up interacting with dozens, maybe 100 principals on a call, interacting with many of our folk here who, and it's Saturday, and it's Sunday, and everybody just answered the call and was just right there working. One of my deep concerns, I share with my trustees, I share with the public, is actually y'all's health. We have a first order of business to provide for the safety of our kids. We have an order of business to provide for the services that all of our students require. And as we work harder and as we work smarter, there is still the reality that if we burn ourselves out, we're not going to do well by anybody. So, there is this incredibly dicey balancing act that even as you strive to take care of our students in the way we are sacredly required to do, that we have chosen, and even as we, as trustees, do our absolute best to support you in that, I'm worried about you, I'm worried about us, I'm worried about our students, and I'm just eternally grateful. And part of our responsibility to serving our students is also seeing to y'all's well-being. That extends to our families, our parents who we've let down, who are like just in it so deep. And we were reminded of that last, yesterday, I guess, I don't know what day it was this weekend. One of these days, when so many of our parents who have been specifically and pointedly let down, were once again trying to let us know that this has been going on, so they're hurting too. So, we're all kind of in it together, and whatever we can do to be supportive in this process, please, please, please know we're here for you and let us know.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. You're always, you're always looking out for us and everyone. If y'all don't know Vice President Foster personally, you're missing out because he cares. Yes, trustee Kaufman.
Thank you. This is a question for Ms. Kaminsky again. Thank you. Hi, Pam. I just wanted to clarify, like, how commonplace is a recommendation for the commissioner to assign conservators to a district in general and then specifically for special education? How often does this happen?
It's not something that occurs frequently, I would say. It's something that once the state identifies a systemic issue, that's when they start looking at special investigation and moving forward with this. I don't have those specific numbers as to how, how many districts have gone through those. I apologize, I don't have that data with me this evening, but I could gather that for you if needed.
Okay, and my question really is more towards then learning from other districts that have experienced this, right? Because we've heard a lot of like guesses about what this experience might look like, and I think we've heard some unanimous, almost, belief that whatever it takes to help us get where we need to be, we're happy to accept, but some skepticism about how helpful this process might be. So, I'm curious, are there other districts, or can you find out for us later? Like, are there other districts, perhaps in addition to Houston, that have experienced a conservator being assigned? And what benefits have accrued from that versus some of the, you know, the less helpful things that people have feared might happen?
Yeah, I can certainly gather that information for you, Mr. Kaufman.
Okay, thank you. And that's my only question. I do want to just echo what all my colleagues have said, but especially what trustee Boswell had said, just around the importance of transparency in this work. And I think if, there are many things that have changed in recent months, but I would say that I witnessed firsthand the transparency beginning to really come out. And I just want to, you know, remain committed to doing even better than that. Transparency in a large organization can sometimes be a scary thing, and it sometimes, you know, can be seen as an impediment to actually getting the work done because, right, if we let people know that we're behind on evaluations, then everybody, you know, if we let someone know that there was a complaint through the TA, then everyone's going to file a complaint. Well, that's what the processes are there for. And I think, I am, I know, I am grateful that the very first night on my first board meeting, we were debriefed on this situation. I'm grateful that the very first afternoon that this letter came out, I was called, I was out of town, and I was called to let know that this is what's happening. And even though we couldn't participate in meetings about it because of open record, open meeting acts, we were informed to the extent possible of what was happening. And that type of transparency, I think, I want to just echo how important that is, but to also acknowledge that it, that is a learned behavior and that it's going to be challenging for us to continue to get more and more transparent, to really trust that sunshine is going to disinfect, that sunshine, that is going to create the pathway for collaboration on these issues. And then, I think, again, to echo trustee Boswell, it will open the door for people to help us identify problems early so we can solve them early. I just, I can't help but go back and kind of relive and think, what if, right, at the beginning of this process, we had done this or that, like, you know, and the mistakes that perhaps we made along the way because people weren't fully aware of the urgency of some of these challenges. That said, I think I can already hear the voices of some of our advocates saying, we've been shouting it from the rooftops for years. And one caller in particular, who I know personally, has been shouting from the rooftop for 20 years about this and bilingual education. So, we have to, this has to be a learning process for us, wherever this comes out, that we have to apply the same level of vigilance to all of our work that we do and make sure that we have our teachers ready to be able to say, hey, this is wrong, or this isn't, this is a problem that I'm facing, and to not fear retaliation for that. So, I cannot emphasize enough how important I think that is, but I also can't signal enough to TEA how that is a marked change in our district that we are really working hard on, and I think it will make a big difference for this. So, yeah, I have a lot to say, but I think my colleagues have said it, and I will stop talking, except to say thank you to our technical team for getting the closed captions up and working. And I know that they are working to get the Facebook feed going again for our next voting meeting, and I know that they are continuing to try to get these technical things worked out. I promise you, this is not a, you know, in the spirit of transparency, like, this is not an effort to kind of close the door to these meetings to people. I do believe that it's technical issues that, for whatever reason, have been hard to solve, but we're working on it.
Thanks, Dr. Kaufman. Trustee Foster.
So, I really appreciate that we have Pam and we have an attorney that we brought on specifically to deal with this particular arena of issues around special education. And I want to ask you, just to kind of just clarifying questions, is the list of, because this has come up in, from the public, is the list of potential conservators publicly available?
I do not have a list of potential conservators, no.
Okay. And will there be any additional, is there an opportunity for receiving additional clarity or information about the sort of fine details of what a conservatorship would look like before we, before April 17th, when we have to make a decision as to whether we will appeal or seek a review?
I'm not anticipating any further information from the state to clarify what the conservatorship, what the management team would look like beyond what is provided here prior to April 17th. That is something that, if the board chooses to appeal, I think would be an appropriate request for clarification as part of that appeal through that informal review process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustees, any other questions or comments? So, I'll just say thank you to, just thank you again to the public for speaking out tonight and for continuing to advocate for our kids. The challenges we're talking about today have, you know, and this particular TEA issue started three boards and four superintendents ago. It's not going to take that long to undo all of this, but it's going to take, it's going to take a lot of hard work. And sometimes that takes time. And I remember, Mr. Segura, when we were talking about the bond last year, I remember being a little like antsy going, Matthias, when are we going to get the bond package? A little bit antsy. And he said, "Trustee, sometimes you have to go slow in order, you've got to go slow in order to go fast later." And I feel like that might be a little bit of the case today, although we sure had to work fast this weekend. And, but I think some of the groundwork was laid, really, in the last three months because of these, these women sitting in front of me and men in the second row. And, you know, the organization has really rallied. I want to thank my fellow trustees. You guys have hit the ground running like I cannot believe. I mean, seriously, y'all have only been here for about three or four months, and it feels like you've been here way longer than that, in a good way. But just the governance role. Mr. Segura, you reminded me, you know, this was so important to us to get SPED, right? That we actually had Dr. Reach write up a little blurb. Do you remember that? For our interviews, for our folks who are candidates for the interim superintendent position. Dr. Reach wrote up a little blurb on SPED and the current investigation and the disability rights lawsuit, and a little blurb on Mendez, because those are two very high priorities for this board, and we wanted to make sure that anybody coming in knew what they were getting into. We didn't want anyone to be blindsided. And I really appreciate that, that you were up to the challenge. And we immediately, you've heard a lot about this ad hoc committee, but it's the three officers plus trustee Willie Chu. And I felt like we made such a good team, particularly this last weekend, just pivoting so quickly. It wouldn't have happened if we hadn't started our committee three months ago. You know, I just shudder to think, like, what if we were blinds, like, totally blindsided? The work that your team did in developing the targets, the numerical targets for the milestones, for hitting the evaluation backlog, because now both Mr. Segura and I co-sign any formal responses to TEA, so no one's surprised, we're on the same page. Pam Kaminsky was hired by both of us. We interviewed her together. Typically, you see a board and administration have their own counsel on things like this, but we're like, no, we're on the same page. There's enough trust there that we want to move forward. So, I'll just say that at the end of all of this, all this talking, at the, and the center of all this is our students. They're not going to get lost in all of this organizational stuff. Our students are the reason we're all here. That is the focus. We have the same goal that TEA has, is we want our students to meet their potential. And I want it to, we want it to happen in a loving way, a way that lifts them up and makes our community stronger, and we're 100% committed to that, I just know it. So, thank you all so much. And if there are not, are there any other final comments, questions? Okay, so, I'm not going to mess this up this time, Ms. Vidio, with the closing of the evening, but we will now recess the open meeting at 9:14 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. For viewers at home, this concludes our live broadcast. When we are finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So, thank you so much for joining us. Thank you, teachers who worked all day and then still came to our meeting. I hope you have a wonderful evening. We will now reconvene the open meeting at 12:22 AM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Kaufman to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously with a vote, the motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 12:23 AM. Thank y'all.